Welcome to the US-79 Widening Project Pre-Recorded Virtual Public Hearing. In addition to this virtual public hearing, TechDOT is providing an in-person option for individuals who would like to participate in person instead of online. The in-person public hearing will include an open house followed by a live presentation. In-person attendees will be able to: Review hard copies of project materials, Ask questions of TechDOT staff before and after the hearing presentation, Provide verbal comments during the hearing presentation, And leave written comments. The in-person public hearing option will be held on Monday, August 15, 2022, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM at the Jewett Civic Center located at 111 North Robinson in Jewett, Texas. My name is Daisy Rona and I am part of the consultant team working on this project on behalf of TechDOT. On behalf of TechDOT, I would like to welcome you and thank you for participating in this public hearing.
Thank you for participating in this virtual public hearing. My name is Doug Moreno and I serve as the Director of Transportation, Planning and Development for the Bryan District of the Texas Department of Transportation, better known as TechDOT. I will also serve as the Public Hearing Officer for this meeting. This pre-recorded public hearing presented by TechDOT is provided to share information and encourage comments from the public regarding the proposed US-79 widening project in Leon County. The virtual public hearing documents are made available online at our TechDOT website, Just type "US-79 Leon County" in the keyword search box. With safety being the priority at TechDOT, I'd like to take a moment to share a message. November 7, 2000 was the last deathless day on roadways in Texas. That means, for nearly 22 years, at least one person has died every single day. We all have a part to play to change that. This message is that reminder to end the streak of deaths on Texas highways. We need drivers and passengers to act more responsibly and help us reach our goal of zero deaths by 2050. Texans can play a major role in ending fatal crashes with a few simple driving habits: Wear seatbelts, drive the speed limit, put away the phone and other distractions, and never drive under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So please, do your part and share this message with friends and family. Thank you.
This presentation will provide the virtual public hearing format and procedures, the project location, purpose and need, proposed improvements, environmental overview, project funding, right-of-way acquisition overview, anticipated project schedule, and how to provide public hearing comments. The information provided in this presentation will be the same as that provided in the in-person public hearing. The options for providing comments on the project are described at the end of this presentation. Public Hearing Format and Procedures The purpose of this public hearing is to present the proposed project and collect public comments, then compile and include them as a formal part of the environmental and project documentation. There are items that must be covered as part of the process. The slides and script of this virtual public hearing will serve as the verbatim transcripts for all that is presented in this hearing and will be included in the final project documentation. There are several ways to comment on the proposed project. All comments must be submitted or postmarked by August 30, 2022 to be part of the official public hearing record. Comments submitted instructions will be provided at the end of this presentation and as follows: You may submit a verbal comment by calling the TechDOT public comment line established for this project immediately following this public hearing presentation or any time during the formal comment period for this hearing. You may submit a written comment through the comment box provided for the in-person hearing. You may submit a written comment by mail to our TechDOT district office or you may submit a written comment by email to a designated TechDOT project manager. You may provide a verbal comment at the in-person hearing, which will be recorded and transcribed for the inclusion in the hearing documentation. Both written and verbal comments will be considered equally. If you submit your comments in writing, it is not necessary to repeat your comments verbally. Project Location The proposed project extends along US-79 in Leon County for approximately 10 miles, beginning west of IH45 in Buffalo and continuing to west of FM1512 near Jewett. Purpose and Need The purpose of this project is to enhance safety and improve mobility by increasing capacity along the US-79 corridor. The project need is based on the following: A review of crash records indicates a total of 127 crashes were recorded within the limits of the proposed project between the years 2013 and 2017, resulting in two fatal crashes and 17 serious injury crashes. The average annual daily traffic volume, or AADT, along the route was 8,143 vehicles per day in 2021 and is projected to increase to 11,400 vehicles per day in the year 2041. Truck traffic along the corridor makes up 25.3% of the traffic volume; a normal range for this type of roadway is 15% to 20%. Proposed Improvements The proposed project is the existing corridor alternative that was previously presented at the November 10, 2020 virtual public meeting. The proposed project would provide improvements that include expansion of the US-79 corridor from two to four travel lanes. A wide grassy median would be added between opposing lanes of traffic in the rural segments of the project. The curves on the existing roadway would be flattened to meet current engineering standards. Conflict points between vehicles would be reduced by providing restricted crossing U-turns, also known as R-CUT, median crossings to allow turning movements at designated locations. New overpasses would be built at FM39 and at the railroad crossing near the entrance to Nucor. Pedestrian and bicycle improvements would be provided through the community of Jewett. The proposed improvements would address the safety issues along the existing roadway. Constructing a wide grassy median to separate opposing traffic would reduce the potential for head-on collisions. Historical trend data for converting rural two-lane roadways to four-lane divided roadways indicate an overall crash reduction of 45%. Some of the curves on the existing roadway do not meet current engineering standards for a 70 mile per hour rural roadway. The proposed project would provide improved curve alignments that would meet current engineering standards. The addition of R-CUT-type median openings reduces conflict points and the crash potential for turning vehicles. By providing left turn lanes at the crossings to allow refuge for turning vehicles, the potential for rear-end collisions would be reduced. Widening from a two-lane roadway to a four-lane roadway would address mobility needs by increasing the travel lane capacity to accommodate car and truck volumes. For orientation purposes, this slide presents key segments and locations along the existing corridor. The project would start just west of IH45 in Buffalo and continue southward along US-79 to west of FM1512 near Jewett. From north to south, the proposed improvements for the US-79 widening project include the following segments: Shown in blue, widening the roadway pavement from two lanes to five lanes, consisting of two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane for about a mile, which will match the current roadway configuration near the IH45 intersection. Then, shown in yellow, widening the rural roadway segment of US-79 from two lanes to four lanes, consisting of two lanes in each direction, separated by a grassy median as it approaches the Jewett city limits. Then, shown in blue, widening the roadway pavement through Jewett from three lanes to five lanes, consisting of two lanes in each direction with a center turn lane, as well as adding pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And then the last segment, shown in yellow, widening US-79 from two lanes to four lanes, consisting of two lanes in each direction, separated by a grassy median. Shown here are the typical sections of the existing and proposed roadway features along rural segments of the US-79 corridor from the eye or ground level perspective. The existing two-lane typical section, shown at the top, includes two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction with 10-foot outside shoulders. The proposed four-lane typical section, shown at the bottom, would include two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction, separated by a 48-foot to 76-foot grassy median. The travel lanes would be bounded by a 4-foot inside and 10-foot outside shoulders. The proposed right-of-way on rural segment of US-79 would be between 200 and 315 feet wide. Similarly, here are the typical sections of the existing and proposed roadway features within Jewett. Again, from the eye or ground level perspective, the existing three-lane typical section, shown at the top, includes two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction with a 14-foot two-way center turn lane and 10-foot outside shoulders. The proposed five-lane typical section, shown at the bottom, would provide two 12-foot travel lanes in each direction, separated by a 16-foot two-way center turn lane. It would also include curb and gutter with a 5- to 10-foot wide shared use path, which is essentially a wide sidewalk that can be utilized by both pedestrians and bicyclists. These right-of-way within Jewett would be between 100 and 140 feet wide. The four-lane divided highway, a small portion of which is shown here in yellow from an aerial perspective, is proposed along the rural segments of US-79 outside of Jewett. In this graphic, north is to the right. The existing roadway will be removed, as shown by the blue shading, and replaced by a grassy median. The detailed schematic, which shows the proposed design in its entirety from an aerial perspective, including the features presented in this public hearing, is available for viewing this evening at this venue and is also available for viewing and download at www.techdot.gov. Just type "US-79 Leon County" in the keyword search box to find the project page. Median crossovers are traditionally used along four-lane divided highways to provide left turn opportunities into intersecting farm-to-market or county roads, as well as U-turn opportunities to allow traffic to change directions along the highway in order to access private driveways. Within the northern four-lane divided highway segment, instead utilizing traditional median crossovers, the project would utilize restricted crossing U-turn intersections, also known as an R-Cuts, to allow left turning movements into intersecting side roads. A unique difference is that R-Cuts eliminate left turns for vehicles exiting the side roads. Instead, the vehicle wanting to make the left turn would take a right turn and then utilize a median U-turn offset from the intersection to then proceed in the desired direction. This results in enhanced safety by minimizing the number of conflicts at the intersection, most notably, the maneuver of turning across four lanes of traffic from the side street that generally results in the most serious types of crashes. This slide shows the proposed R-Cut intersection at County Road 330. The gray arrows indicate the allowable movements through the intersection. A northbound driver on US-79 can turn left onto County Road 330 through the R-Cut intersection. A southbound driver on US-79 can change direction by proceeding through the U-turn location. A driver on County Road 330 can turn right onto US-79, but to turn left, the driver must turn right at US-79 and then U-turn at a location offset from the intersection. It is noted the system of R-Cuts along the corridor provides the same access to private driveways as traditional median crossovers with the advantage of safer traffic movements. The locations of the R-Cut intersections are symbolized by the red circles and coincide with the intersections at County Roads 327, 330, and 329. New overpasses will be constructed at FM39 and at the railroad crossing near the Nucor entrance. The locations of the new overpasses are symbolized in this graphic by the red boxes along the southernmost segment. The following slides will present key features of the new overpasses. A newly configured FM39 intersection is shown in light blue. FM39 would be realigned as shown to bridge over US-79 and the Union Pacific Railroad. West of the bridge, a roundabout would be constructed with a ramp connection to US-79 that will allow access from both northbound and southbound traffic on US-79 via a signalized continuous green tea intersection. An important feature is that northbound US-79 through traffic would not have to stop at the continuous green tea intersection. Pedestrian improvements include a shared use path, shown in purple, providing bicycle-pedestrian connectivity to Jewett. This slide provides a close-up view of the US-79 signalized continuous green tea intersection at FM39, a two-way ramp to and from FM39 intersects US-79. Northbound US-79 traffic has a continuous green line on US-79. A signalized continuous green tea intersection operates the same as a traditional signalized intersection with the added feature of allowing one direction of through traffic, in this case, northbound traffic, to flow through the intersection without stopping. A raised median would be constructed to channelize traffic movements through this intersection. Shown here is the new overpass along US-79 at the railroad crossing near Nucor Still Foundry's primary entrance along US-79. The existing US-79 alignment, shown in crosshatch blue, indicates removal of the existing ground-level railroad crossing. The proposed realignment of US-79, shown in yellow, will bridge over the Nucor entrance and the Union Pacific Railroad. A reconfigured Nucor entrance, shown in light blue, and CR347 will remain at existing ground level with access to US-79. For northbound traffic, there is a turnaround between Nucor and FM39 that allows drivers to U-turn and enter Nucor from US-79 at the new two-way ramp entrance. Southbound traffic will be able to enter Nucor through the new two-way ramp entrance directly. This slide illustrates the urban improvements in Jewett. Their configuration would be five total lanes consisting of two 12-foot lanes in each direction with a 16-foot two-way center turn lane, curbs, and shared use paths for pedestrians and bicyclists. A traffic signal would be constructed at Division Street. In addition, a potential partnership with the city of Jewett would realign the southern leg of Division Street to improve traffic operations. A signalized pedestrian crossing would be installed between Waltman Street and Pettigrew Street. And finally, on-street parking in addition to parking encroachments within existing state right-of-way would be removed to allow for expansion to the five lanes and improve safety. A key aspect of project development is to generate alternatives for a project in order to evaluate possible improvements and impacts from various designs. An important component of this project was to determine how regional traffic passing through the area would be handled in the vicinity of the Jewett community. Alternatives were generated and shared through the public involvement process. The public involvement process provides opportunities for stakeholders and the public to share feedback on the proposed alternatives for consideration in shaping the final design of project. Open House #1 was held on June 5, 2018 at the Jewett Civic Center and focused on various options for widening along the existing US-79 corridor. Open House #2 was held on April 11, 2019 at the Jewett Civic Center, which provided a refined existing corridor alternative and introduced a relief route concept. Based on public comments received, the relief route concept was further developed from a concept into a refined design to better understand possible impacts. The existing corridor alternative, along with the relief route alternative, were presented at a subsequent public meeting held virtually due to COVID-19 on November 10, 2020. The existing corridor alternative and relief route alternative routes that were presented at the virtual public meeting are shown here. Both alternatives include the same improvements from the north side of Jewett to Buffalo. Shown in orange, the relief route would construct a new location route consisting of a four-lane divided highway that would extend approximately six miles around the northwest side of Jewett. The existing corridor alternative would construct the previously described five-lane urban segment improvements through Jewett. The process for selecting the preferred alternative for the project includes assessing feedback received from the public and local stakeholders, as well as evaluating other criteria such as property impacts, environmental impacts, and project costs. Therefore, based on public and local stakeholder feedback, including city and county resolutions that support maintaining a viable route through town, along with significant criteria such as the amount of new right-of-way required and the total cost of the project, the existing corridor alternative was selected as the preferred alternative for further development. Environmental Overview TechDOT Bryan District conducted the environmental studies and documentation for this project in compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, often referred to as NIPA. We are required to share the statements shown on this slide at all of our public outreach activities and environmental documents. Its purpose is to notify the public and other agencies that the Federal Highway Administration has delegated some of its responsibilities to TechDOT when it comes to the environmental review and approval of certain types of transportation projects. An environmental assessment is required when the significance of the environmental impacts are uncertain. The purpose of this process is to clarify any uncertainty and document the findings. If no significant impacts are found, the process is concluded with a finding of no significant impact, referred to as a FANCY. The environmental assessment identified and evaluated the potential impacts by the proposed project regarding specific aspects of the natural and human environment listed on the slide. The findings of the environmental assessment for this project show that this project has no significant impact on the environment and that no unusual circumstances exist. The proposed project plans and details on the environmental studies performed and the conclusions reached will continue to be available for review at the TechDOT Bryan District Office. TechDOT coordinated with various states and federal agencies, as well as local stakeholders. This was done in order to develop a project that complies with all applicable regulations and takes into account the concerns of civic and business interests, as well as private citizens. The results of the environmental study for the proposed US-79 widening project is summarized as follows: The proposed project will not impact air quality. Under both the build and no build alternatives, continuing trends in air quality improvement are expected to continue. There will be no impact to undisturbed archaeological resources or any historic properties. No new archaeological sites were identified during the survey of the project area. However, additional surveys will need to be conducted prior to construction. It was determined that there would be no disproportionately high or adverse impact to minority or low-income populations. Overall, the proposed design features would enhance mobility and access and would reduce congestion and improve safety for both minority and non-minority populations. It was also determined that there would be no disproportionately high or adverse impact to environmental justice or limited English proficiency populations. Biological resources, including vegetation, wildlife habitat, and threatened and endangered species, were evaluated for potential impacts. The project will have no effect on any federally listed species or its habitat. Potential habitat for state-listed species is present within the study area. TechDOT will implement best management practices as specified in its programmatic agreement with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to avoid impacts to state-listed species. Coordination with Texas Parks and Wildlife was initiated on January 25, 2021 and completed on August 25, 2021. A hazardous material initial site assessment was completed and 87 hazardous materials records occur within or near the project area. Five of these were identified as potential contamination risk. However, hazardous materials impacts are not anticipated from the facilities identified as potential risk. Existing and predicted traffic noise levels were modeled using the approved FHWA traffic noise model. An increase of no greater than 4 dB was predicted. Noise abatement measures were evaluated for areas where traffic noise impacts were anticipated. As a result, the evaluation concluded that no traffic noise abatement measures were both feasible and reasonable in accordance with agency criteria. Therefore, no traffic noise abatement measures are proposed for the project. For impacts to water resources, TechDOT will comply with all stay-construction permitting, stormwater management, and notification requirements. It is anticipated that work within waters of the US will be authorized under a nationwide permit with a pre-construction notification issued by the US Army Corps of Engineers. Regarding the items summarized and other potential impacts evaluated, the environmental studies, analysis, and evaluation performed thus far indicate that the proposed improvements would not result in significant environmental impacts. The draft environmental assessment for the proposed project is available at the environmental table at the in-person option and will continue to be available for review at the TechDOT Bryan District Office. Project Funding The proposed project is included in the applicable federal and state planning documents. The project has an estimated construction cost of approximately $149 million. This estimate is preliminary and subject to change. The source of the construction funds are distributed through UTP Funding Category 4R, which consists of federal and state funds. Right-of-way Acquisition Overview The project requires approximately 215 acres of new right-of-way. Potential displacements include 10 residences, 17 commercial businesses, one church, one nonprofit community service organization, and three other structures. When acquiring right-of-way, TechDOT follows the Federal Uniform Act and the State of Texas Landowners Bill of Rights as noted on the slide. The right-of-way acquisition process begins with a survey at each tract of land of the proposed right-of-way parcels as identified in the project schematic. A registered professional land surveyor will produce a map of all rights-of-way for the project, as well as a parcel sketch and legal land description for each parcel of land requiring acquisition. As a general rule, the next step is to obtain environmental clearance for the project, after which the survey documents are then turned over to a contracted independent appraiser who will notify the landowner to set a meeting time to conduct an appraisal of the parcel and property. The independent appraiser will determine the fair market value of the parcel, including the value of any damages to the remainder and the value of all improvements on the parcel. TechDOT will provide the landowner with a copy of that report along with a letter offering that value as the purchase price. The landowner may make one counteroffer if there are elements affecting the value that have been neglected in the report. TechDOT has an administrative settlement team who will consider a counteroffer and recommend whether to accept it or not. If the landowner agrees to the offered value or an administrative settlement value, then TechDOT will possess the necessary records of the transaction to take possession of the right-of-way. If the landowner does not agree with the value of the offer and an administrative settlement is not reached, then the next avenue available to the landowner is a special commissioners' hearing. The special commissioners are three local citizens knowledgeable of local land values who are appointed by the judge whose court has jurisdiction over the area. These commissioners hear from the landowner and from TechDOT as to the value of the property and then make their own judgment as to that value. The amount of that judgment is deposited by the state in the registry of the court and the state takes possession of the right-of-way at that time. The landowner may decide whether to withdraw the awarded funds or seek further remedy through a jury trial. The state may also seek a jury trial if the state does not agree with the commissioner's award. The trial is heard before a jury in the district court and the jury decides the appropriate award. This jury award may also be appealed by either side through the civil appeals process. The Uniform Act also provides for relocation assistance to those who are displaced by a project. This assistance may cover moving expenses, business losses during the move, and other expenses for a commercial displacement. It may cover moving expenses for relocating residents, whether they are tenants or owners. Eligible expenses may include the cost of moving real or personal property and possibly supplemental funds if similarly valued properties are not available. The move must be to a decent, safe, and sanitary location that is of equal or greater value than the original location. Relocation resources would be made available to all eligible displaced residents, including tenants, without discrimination. Additionally, you can contact the TechDOT right-of-way project managers directly at the email address as shown. Anticipated Project Schedule The general project development schedule is shown on this slide. We are currently in the process of completing the environmental documentation. We anticipate beginning the developing of contract construction plans and starting the right-of-way acquisition and utility adjustment processes later this year. The anticipated lead date for contractor bidding is fall of 2025. With an expected construction start date in early 2026, construction would take approximately three years to complete. Provide Hearing and Comments As previously mentioned, TechDOT wants your feedback on the information presented about this project. We understand this virtual meeting format is a bit different, so let's take a few minutes and explain the comment process. Comments can be submitted in a variety of ways. If you are attending the in-person hearing option, you may submit a written comment through the comment box provided for the in-person hearing. Hard copy comment forms will be made available. Hard copy comment forms will be made available and/or provide a verbal comment to the stenographer available at the in-person hearing. You may submit a verbal comment by calling the Text dot public comment line established for this project at nine zero three, three four five, four seven two four, immediately following this virtual public hearing presentation or any time during the formal comment period for this hearing from four PM, Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two, until eleven fifty-nine PM, Tuesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. You may submit a written comment by email to text dot's project manager at steve.higgins@text.gov. You may submit a written comment by mail to text dot Bryan District Office, Attention: Steve Higgins, P.E., twenty-five ninety-one North Earl Rutter Freeway, Bryan, Texas, seven seven eight zero three. A comment form is available online and can be found at our text dot website, www文文文文文文 Just type "US seventy-nine Leon County" in the keyword search box. Both written and verbal comments will be considered equally. If you submit your comments in writing, it is not necessary to repeat your comments verbally. While comments are always welcome, all public hearing comments must be submitted or postmarked by Tuesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, to be part of the official public hearing record. If you have general questions regarding the proposed project, please contact Steve Higgins, P.E., Text dot project manager, by phone at nine seven nine, seven seven eight, nine seven zero one, between the hours of eight AM and five PM, Monday through Friday, at any time during the project development process. Thank you for participating in the virtual public hearing. This concludes the virtual public hearing for the US seventy-nine widening project.